I will call the meeting to order. I ask if you'll rise if you're able and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have public comment. Does anyone wish to speak on anything not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one, I will move on. Owen's not here tonight. Owen had sent me an email that he is working tonight but has taken, made sure that he had the rest of the school committee meetings off, so he will be joining us at our next meeting. So I wanted to do a report from school committee members, but before we begin with that, I do want to make mention of a passing that we had since our last meeting, and that was Terry Page who passed away. Brian Giammoni is quick to call her the seventh member of the school committee. I know myself, Mr. Lynch, and Ms. Giammoni would generally receive weekly phone calls from Terry.
Daily.
Daily. And they were fun. Terry had her point of view. She always expressed it honestly and openly, but was willing to listen and hear what you had to say. And you could differ with Terry and be fine. And she was, she was a wonderful lady. We wish her two boys and her husband well. But again, she'll be missed. And Brian, I didn't know if you wanted to add anything to that.
My phone has been very silent this last week or so, and it's actually noticeable in the house. I'm saddened, but I'm saddened. Her family still resides in town. I mean, Steve Sportsden, anyone who's lived here knew Steve Sportsden, that's Terry's family. So she's got a brother, a sister, a husband, and two sons, one of our students. So I wish the most for him, and I hope he has a great year. I really do.
Brian, did you want to add anything?
No. No, no point of avoiding it anyway.
No, I just, I agree with both of your sentiments with regard to Terry and her expansive knowledge of town politics and town politicians and her seemingly just easy ease of ability to call and have a conversation with anyone about anything. Sometimes I thought I was the only one getting called, and then I talked to Mr. Brannigan, and he received calls, and I talked to Mr. Gagin, and he received calls, and our elementary administration received calls. She had a list of phone calls to make after each meeting, and I had many meaningful conversations with her about many meaningful items, and a lot of just chat about Middleborough and talking about the love of this town and that she grew up in this town, and talking about her mom and dad. I knew her mom and dad, and her mom worked at the polls forever, and her dad obviously ran his local business. So we went way back, and we renewed old acquaintances when I became the superintendent, which was, which was, to me, a stroke of luck in my favor, and I appreciated the time I got to spend with her and actually regret the fact that I was unable to return her last phone call because by the time I got the news, it was too late to return that call. So I'll carry that with me. But I hope she's better and in a better place and loose to the bonds of earth, and Godspeed. Terry Page, thank you.
So we'll go around and ask for regular school committee member comment. Mr. Ness. Mr. Stevens.
Nothing to report.
Mr. Lambert.
Yes, I do. Got a little prepared statement. Good evening. It is with a heavy heart but optimism toward the future that I have to inform you all tonight that this will be my last school committee meeting. My resignation will be effective tomorrow afternoon. I have been offered an unexpected career opportunity that I, in good faith toward my young family, cannot turn down. Unfortunately, it will be impossible to accept this opportunity and continue to serve this esteemed group of men and women. Three years ago, when I set out on this journey, I had high hopes but blind optimism. I had no idea what was in store. There have been highs and lows, but through it all, this group of local leaders has maintained the highest level of professionalism toward each other and the people of this town. I'm extremely proud of the work we were able to accomplish. Together, we hired a new superintendent who has done nothing but impress me. Though I may not have voted for him officially, the right decision was made in the end. He has shown himself to be more than up to the task of leading our schools, and I know he'll go on to do great things for our students well into the future. We have made steps towards transparency in government with our social media policy, which has gotten people involved online and gives the town an easily accessible location to learn what we are doing to improve the education of the students in Middleborough. I hope it continues. This town has embarked on a path toward building a new and well-deserved high school. I've watched with excitement each week to learn new details about the building and all the planning that goes along with it. Important work has been done by everyone here to make what was once a dream a soon-to-be reality. I am saddened by the fact that I will not be able to work with this group to see it to completion, but I know it will happen. It has been a pleasure and an honor to serve with these five members of this board. Ms. Janice, Mr. Stevens, Ms. Giammoni, Ms. Franco, Mr. Young, former members Ms. Anderson and Mr. Gillis, as well as Superintendent Lynch, and Ms. Pietelli. Where was I here? And everyone else involved in Middleborough Public Schools. I know this, this group will continue to do great things for public education in my absence. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lambert. I think it goes without saying, Adam, that we'll miss you. Adam had called me last week and told me about his opportunity, and so we wish you well with what you're going to do. I will miss you. I, you know, there have been many times that I've just been able to reach out to Adam and have conversations, and he's really been open, and he's always been willing to step up and do things whenever I've asked him to. And so I'm very appreciative of that, and, you know, it's one of those things where Adam and I were elected together for the first time to this committee, and so we have sort of a bond on that, and so I thank you for your service to the town, and you will be missed. Mr. Giammoni.
Well, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to miss you, Adam. I think this is a great opportunity that you have. As I just said earlier, congratulations, but it's great that we've had spirited debate. And as I said, I wish the federal government could do what we do here at this table, have our spirited debate but get things done, because it hasn't been happening the last six months, and it's a shame that that hasn't there. But here it does, and I'm, I'm going to miss you. You bring something to this board, your experience, your, what you do every day, and you will be missed, but absolutely congratulations on your new experience.
Thank you very much.
I do also want to say that I had an opportunity today to, my son runs cross-country in the high school. Man, the fields were packed. It was great to hear the things going on over there. What are we, three days in? And already, I mean, they were practicing before, but these were games, and it's just so exciting. It's going on everywhere. The excitement is everywhere in the district. I've had a few parents that I've bumped into or talked with, they're excited that kids are back at school, but even their kids are, everyone seems to be excited. There's a, there's got to be a buzz in the district and the rooms. I don't know about you guys, see it, but man, even some of the teachers I've talked to, when you get up, Ms. Gates, I'll tell you what they've said, they all loved it, but I'll, I'll give you some exact words that were said about your program. But this, this start of the year is a buzz, and I think it's great, and hopefully it'll continue on October 2nd and November 4th.
Ms. Franco.
Thank you. So thank you, Adam. Those are very eloquent words. I think personally, I've learned a lot from you, and I appreciate getting to know you as a person, so thank you for, for that. And then certainly, I appreciate you and the work that you've done here on the committee. It's certainly a balance between work and family and making sure you're all in with this particular role in the community that you've been elected to. So I just want to thank you for your time. Thank you for your engagement, and it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve with you, and I wish you the best and stay connected for sure. So thank you.
Just a couple of things. I have, first and foremost, Mr. Silva, the new athletic director, put online a new calendar system through the MIA website for all our sporting events. I would really encourage the community to go to it. It's really simple to click and add it to your own personal calendar. It is also, it is also updated all the time, so you can see every event that goes on, especially, it applies to both the high school and, and varsity, junior varsity, and eighth grade sport, seventh and eighth grade sports. So it applies to all of them. There are a lot of sports this time of year, and so I would really encourage people, if you have a few minutes, just go down and help support the kids, whether it's cross-country, field hockey, soccer, or any of them. In addition to that-
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Can you just explain again how you access that calendar? Is it through the district website?
Sure. If you go on the, if you go on to the Middleborough High School website, click on Departments, you can go to Athletics, and that's a separate entity that you'll see almost immediately about, about the sporting events. It lists every team, every season. It'll include, for example, there are some baseball games already listed that they have into it, and it fills up as everything fills up.
Mr. Chair, I think, just to clarify, I think if you go on the district site, the home site, there is an athletic heading. If you click on Athletics, it'll bring you to the Athletic Department, which will include his Twitter feed, which he's very active with, Ryan Sylvia, just like Mike Perry was before. But in addition, you can click over on the left, there's a left margin, and click on Schedules, and you can go to any fall sport and follow any of the games, so.
In respect to that, too, is you can sign up if you have a specific sport that your child plays, and they will, they will update you if there's a change in schedule, change in time, change in location on that MIA. And at the original Fall Athletics meeting that Ryan had a few weeks ago, he was talking about how that is going to be the easiest way to push information out to people is if you're signed up on that MIA piece, and even went through it. It's very simple. So it's a great, great program for all the athletics that are going on.
And then also, on the high school website that I want to put out to people, there is a new store, and that store is an online opportunity for people to buy merchandise with Middleborough logo on it. And it also, Nichols has their online store that just came on that has the Nichols logo. But just so everyone knows, you can order it online, you will pay for it, it'll get shipped to the high school, or Nichols, depending on which one you're getting. So you don't need kids in the school system to buy this merchandise. You'll just, you'll get a time to come and pick it up after school and pick up your materials. So if you want to go to a game with your Middleborough piece, you can do that.
And they're generally affordable. Very affordable.
You can get a hooded sweatshirt for $25.
And there's a hat for $10, and so it's, it's very reasonable and very affordable. So I do want to bring up that because it's fantastic. I also want to bring up that this Friday night is the opening of football, and Mr. Breen from the high school puts together, being the weekend of 9/11, we celebrate the first responders in Middleborough. I believe Student Council Paul puts together baskets for the first responders, and they're given to them at the half or the beginning of the game, I forget which, but that'll happen Friday night at 7:00, so I hope that people can attend. And that's fantastic. And that's all, all right, and that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
One other piece.
Sure.
And somewhere on our website, I believe there's a way for parents to sign up to have text messaging and emails through the Blackboard. Is that something that's going to be put on there for people to sign up?
We can clarify that.
Maybe the next meeting we'll talk about.
We're, we're working with the Technology Department to update that website.
Excellent.
Update our website and also update our capabilities to push out more information.
Excellent.
We do use the Blackboard Connect. For example, yesterday, we were having difficulties with our phone, which I was going to mention a little bit later, having difficulty with our phones, but I was able to, to email out to 3,200 email addresses, who, those who were registered, that information, because I obviously couldn't call it out because my message would have been garbled, because that's what the message was about, that our phone conversations were a little bit garbled. So that, that situation has been remedied, so it's good.
Thank you. Next up is MIA report, Mr. Catina. Officially welcome back to school, Mr. Catina.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the school committee and the administrators for a wonderful three-days opening. I think most of the teachers that I've heard from, all the teachers I've heard from, had a, thought it was great. I especially like to thank the parents and the people who were involved in supporting the high school luncheon at the Boston Tavern. That was a great time. So that was just truly one of those, kind of like a big surprise, as I'm sure Mr. Brannigan has told everybody, but they tried to keep it a surprise from all of us, too, which they did a really good job of, so it was a great time. Opening week this week was really good, at least for up at the high school. Little streamlined system, it used to spread out quite a lot more. I think they're working on getting everything streamlined for the opening day ceremonies and things that the students have to do to begin with, and maybe even more, some more of that for next year, as we find some things out. Had a wonderful speaker today. I'm pretty sure the students all had a wonderful time with it. She had a wonderful message, and then we got to talk with her at the end, as we always do, so that was a great time. I do want to let you know that I will not be at the next school committee meeting on Tuesday, the 19th. I will be undergoing what is known as cryoablation. The marble-sized tumor that is the remainder of my cancer is going to be frozen and killed, but I'll be out from Tuesday through the end of the week, probably try to get back on the Monday. But, so I, if, I think you have a school committee meetings, the first and the third. I wouldn't make it to that one, so, unless, of course, you want to have it at the hospital.
We can work that out. There's no problem. And we wish you well, too, to make sure that-
Other than that, that's all I have.
We know you've gone through a lot, and we appreciate it. And we appreciate, you know, you show up after various treatments and everything like that at times, so we really appreciate everything that you've gone through and how you've trudged on here especially, so we appreciate that.
Now, if I didn't actually do this stuff, I don't know what I would be doing. It's like push forward and everything, that's just my, my mentality, so. Any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Catina, thank you very much. Next up, Mr. Lynch, we have some recognition.
We do. We have Laurie Davis here, who's a high school teacher, and she had requested that she come down and talk to us about the recent trip to London, which was a year in the making in terms of planning and fundraising, and, and she wants to show us some pictures and has a bit of a PowerPoint, a PowerPoint, and tell us all about the wonderful trip.
Oh, thank you, and good evening, and I wanted to thank everyone for approving the trip to begin with, and I especially want to recognize the parents that supported the trip and did everything they could to help fundraise, especially Mrs. Babin, who's here today. She's phenomenal. She wouldn't have been able to do anything without her support, and she even started a Facebook page for the kids, and kind of shared pictures with parents on that page as well, so thank you, Mrs. Babin. I just, I, I wanted to kind of show you what the experience the kids had. You know, a lot of times, we go on these trips, and, and I know there's probably some kind of question as to what it is that we actually do when we're on these trips. And the kids were kind enough to listen to me, and asked, when I asked and requested that they share what they felt was the most important thing that they got out of that trip. So I just wanted to share that with you, so you kind of could see the importance of why these trips are important. So we started in London, which was great. The kids had four days. Most of the trip was structured in London with a few day trips where we were able to go to Bath and Stonehenge. So we were able to participate in a theater training workshop, which I have some photos of that, and the kids were phenomenal, and the director came up to Danny Duggan and I and actually commented on how impressed he was with the level of participation, level of ability that these kids had demonstrated there. So it was actually kind of nice to hear that from someone outside of the district. They were able to see, while we were there, it was Canadian Day, so they were able to see the parade to Buckingham Palace and the changing of the guard with the Canadian Guards. That was actually really exciting for them as well. Unfortunately, we couldn't see Westminster Abbey because the Royals were visiting. So Ally was most impressed with, not always, they had some free time, so they didn't always know what it was that they were seeing when they were on their own, but a lot of them commented on the architecture and the structure and the actual city itself and how easy it's laid out, getting around on the tube, and many of them went during their free time to various areas using the tube, and it was very easy for them to navigate that city, unlike Boston and the subway system in Boston. A lot of them went to visit the London Eye, there was no way I was getting on that, I'm afraid of heights, but they enjoyed that and getting a different view of the city. Allison Moran, class of 28, liked to comment on that, especially she went with her friends to see that. Tessa Babin was, they were all excited about these waffle cones. That was like the big thing. Food was obviously very important to them, so the waffle cones were very exciting for them, and spending time with their friends and doing new things and experiencing that together was also very important for them, especially getting ready to go into college. You know, this was pretty much their last hurrah to spend with their time, with their friends. Megan Malloy, a lot of the kids during their free time, they went off on their own to do things that, you know, were culturally impressive for them, so they went to, and I know Tessa, you did as well, they went to the National Gallery and saw art. They, this was most impressive to me, they went to a four-story bookstore and bought new books and sat in St. James Park and read. So as an English teacher, that just made my heart explode with joy, and they did, they really enjoyed having some time to have some downtime where we weren't running them ragged. And then, you know, we went to visit Stonehenge, and many of them focused on that. Alina liked the idea that we get out of the city because it was congested and quite busy, more so along the lines of New York. Quite crowded. We went during Wimbledon, so it was very crowded. And it was great because they had these great free areas where they set up giant TVs for them to be able to watch, you know, London was watching Wimbledon as a group, and it was really interesting, and they had table tennis for them to participate in, too. It was really interesting to see that. We went to Bath, and they were celebrating Jane Austen's birthday, she was, she would have been 200. So they were celebrating her birthday, and the kids, we actually got to experience the Roman baths while we were there, and that was Catherine Williams' favorite day. She really liked the idea that they were able to preserve so much of that Roman bath and that history, and she really found that fascinating. Many of them did. And Brianna Lowell, class of 2018, she loved the idea that they were able, you know, with her friends before her senior year to create these kinds of special memories as well. Of course, we went to Stratford, which was many of their favorite days. They were able to visit Shakespeare's home and Anne Hathaway's cottage as well, and for Abby Sheehan, she just, she enjoyed that day. It was so beautiful. The weather was perfect. The gardens were gorgeous. The kids had a great time being able to explore that area, especially with their friends. And Ariana loved the concept of being able to feel like you were walking on the actual stones, because the cottage has not seen any renovation, and the actual stone floor was the stone floor that Anne Hathaway and Shakespeare walked on, and it gave her goosebumps. She kept telling me, oh, they walked here. We also went to the Globe Theater, and they participated in an interactive lecture, which, you know, for the theater kids was, they were over the moon about. Emily Wolfe couldn't wait to have been there, the idea of seeing that stage and being in that area where, you know, the greatest plays and the greatest playwright ever existed. Went, this was my favorite day. Went to the Tower of London. Unfortunately, it was 90 degrees that day, but we were able to see the crown jewels. We were able to see that the architecture is very much still intact. They had a great guide. He was a history scholar from Oxford, and he spoke to them about all of the prisoners that had been there and various aspects of the tower that were kind of like the history of it and the, you know, the ghost stories as well. And Mackenzie loved the idea of the architecture in and around that area. We had great views of the Tower Bridge while we were there as well. And then Maria loved the idea that she spent most of her time with Abby and Tessa as well. They went, I believe you guys went to the Ripley Museum while you were there as well, which was something that they did on their own free time. And then this was the acting workshop. So they went to the production, and the day after, they worked with the theater company that helped produce the play that they had seen, and they did about two hours of a workshop. And like, as I said, the director that was working with them was very impressed with their ability to be able to do these, these acting exercises. He said that they were very well-versed in the, in the program, and they were advanced to what he's used to. And that, that's really Mrs. Doug, Mrs. Duggan's thing. We also got to see 42nd Street. We saw quite a few musicals, and you, you would think that they'd be more British, but they sent us to American ones, so we saw American in Paris, and we saw 42nd Street, which was seeing a revival in the Royal Theater. And it was actually very interesting, the architecture of that theater was pretty much to the original. They had just done some renovation on it, and that was Haley White's favorite, as she and Megan and Alina have danced together since they were children. And then Avery Warner just couldn't say enough. She praises the theater program and praised the idea of this trip making her, you know, pushing her out of her shell, breaking her out into the open, making her see new worlds. And many of these, many of the kids commented that they are, they plan on traveling again now out of the country now, since they've seen what the world has to offer, so. And so I, I just wanted to make sure that you were able to see that and kind of understand, you know, the importance of this, and thank you very much for allowing them to go. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Laurie.
No problem.
Laurie, I do want to say something that I think is really important. My daughter went on the trip, and I did want to tell the committee that both you and Ms. Duggan, over and over again, you know, we did a lot of fundraising, we did a lot of things for, to get the kids. You guys were always there. You didn't need to be there. You spent two days at Crazy Days-
Yeah.
-helping sell raffle tickets, which I might add that the superintendent won the raffle and then gave all the money back to the kids.
It wasn't planned that way.
No. But, I mean, over and over again, you guys were always there. And I do want to bring up something that had happened, because I think it was important, and we, Mr. Brannigan has said it in the past, prior to the trip, there were some bad things happening in England, and the, the company sent every one of the parents a note offering to reimburse them fully for the trip and outlining that they did not have to go. I don't think anyone opted out.
None of them did.
And every, you know, it was conversations with parents and kids, and I thought that was great, but, you know, the, that, the program went out of its way to, you know, address things with parents and make sure they knew what they were looking at and what was going to happen, but also just to say, we're fine if you want your money back, it's okay. And, you know, it was just impressive to me being a part of it, and so, again, I just want to say those things because I think they're important.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Franco.
Thank you so much for coming in and sharing these reflections from the trip. It's so important, because as we sit up here, and every year, we evaluate these types of trips, you know, and without having some of this tangibles to kind of reflect on, it can be challenging when there's challenging times and things come up. I think what I liked, in coming back and reflecting on this, is it's nice you can see some of the alignment to the curriculum that you're working on, but also the stuff that's not even tangible, that's the, it's the experiences, it's the exposure, it's the feeling of community when you're outside of the community, like all of, all of those pieces that came through and sharing that with us today, which is not something that I think we think about when we're looking at approving a trip that's aligned to curriculum and what's, you know, coming through on the documents. So that was really what stood out for me today, and I appreciate that you shared that with our, with our group, so thank you.
My pleasure. My pleasure.
I do, I do want to add one other thing, too, that I think was really important. There was a lot of kids who went on the trip who were 18 and had just graduated. And, you know, we had a conversation with, I had a conversation with some of the kids about, you know, there were things open that they could do because they were eligible to drink and everything like that, but there were rules set, and if you think about it, the kids who just graduated really don't have a punishment that anyone can give to them because they've already got their diplomas and moved on. But when you asked the kids, was there any problems, they were like, no, because people respect Ms. Duggan, people respect Ms. Davis, and no one wanted to do anything that would make them angry. And I thought that was, you know, sort of a fantastic piece from those kids, that they all, they were all, they were very happy to be there, but they were happy to be there with both you and Ms. Duggan, and so I want to bring that up, too.
Thank you. I, I will say that we went with two other schools, and many of the other school teachers came and spoke to Mrs. Duggan and I about the level of respect and the level of academic interest in what was going on, and the level of independence that our kids demonstrated was beyond the other two schools. Our kids were very actively seeking to do things during their free time, go to shows in the evening when they had a free evening. Our kids were very actively seeking to do things during their free time, go to shows in the evening when they had a free evening. And our kids were taking other students from other schools with them that they had made friends with, who were hesitant to explore London on their own. And it wasn't just the kids who had graduated either, it was the kids that were juniors, and we had one sophomore as well. So it, it was more than just the experience for them, it was nice to see them really bloom and really kind of show, I mean, we say it all the time, but really kind of show what it means to be a senior. Like, to be honest with you, they were very, I, I, we were very pleased with them, we were very pleased with them, so proud. But thank you, again.
Thank you very much. We'll turn it over now to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Our first, my first report tonight involves Dr. Melanie Gates, who's going to talk about a couple of things, the new educator summer orientation program called Staff Strong, and also a bit on professional development during last week called Ed Camp. It's a concept called Ed Camp that has, the Nichols Middle School has explored in the past and was explored with the 6th through 12 teachers, and they all were here. I came, actually, Chairman Young and I came to the conclusion of that Ed Camp when they had what's called the Smackdown, and it was, it was quite interesting to, to watch and listen to. Initially, the teachers sort of hesitant, like most classrooms, hesitant to talk about their experience, but it, it very quickly snowballed into a real discussion about the professional development that they had been through. So, without further ado, Dr. Gates, welcome.
Thank you Superintendent Lynch, thank you school committee members. Mr. Lambert, thank you for your service to our school committee. It's certainly not a job that is probably glamorous and receives many accolades, but I certainly thank you for giving up time away from your family to be here to support the schools. So thank you for that, and I wish you the best of luck in your next endeavor. So I'm going to share about two things, as Superintendent Lynch said. One is Staff Strong, our three-day orientation program with our new teachers. And just as a reminder, it is a mandatory program for all new hires regardless of their prior service as an educator because we want to make sure that everyone is able to achieve our high expectations here in Middleborough and make sure that they are able to start their career strong. Just the general gist of the agenda that you have seen before, but just a reminder of just some of the events that took place, being able to, to meet our association president, Mr. Catino, as well as have Mr. Lynch kick off the event. Went over policies and procedures, evaluation system, all of our new teachers participated in the district emergency response training. A big change from prior years was we had opportunities for small breakout sessions, and this year primarily focused on technology and special education. And as always, we include our tour of Middleborough, and time for curriculum exploration and time in classrooms. And on that last day, when they do have time in classrooms and such, they are with their mentors. So they're able to be guided along by their mentor and start to form that very important relationship between the mentee and the mentor. So I just wanted to share some feedback about the event. As you can see here from the, the scale of the questions or prompts, the light blue being strongly agree, darker blue is agree, and then neutral was a somewhat of an orange color. And we won't mention the rest because they didn't get any votes, but as you can see, the majority of the participants strongly agreed that these sessions did increase their professional knowledge and enhance their ability to be effective in their practice, that the materials give them more meaningful, and that it would impact student performance. The one area that I gleaned from the feedback, the, the most constructive criticism, as you can see here in the comments, the one in the middle, which says this training would have been more effective if it included several extensive sessions with curriculum coaches, leaders, et cetera. And that's definitely an area that I know over the past few years is something that needs to be strengthened, and I will work diligently to make sure that that occurs. But I'm, I'm proud of the fact that most of the comments relay that they can tell that the employees of the Middleborough Public Schools treat it as a family, and that they do love the district, our students and our families, and they can feel that right from the get-go, and I think that's important. So just some of the comments that were shared are posted here, there were some others. I just picked ones that were representative of the larger group of comments that were provided. So the, as I said, the one, I guess, main criticism was just the intensity of curriculum exploration. And as I said, I'll be working on that with future programming. Thanks to Sean for getting a great group photo as we embarked on our tour. We got to ride on one of the new buses, and they were great. We were able to take a couple-hour tour around town, visiting some of the different areas of our community so that our teachers can understand where our students live and, and get a bit of a chance to appreciate the beauty and history of Middleborough. Because we don't want them to just come to our schools and go back and forth to their home and just our schools, we want them to be part of our entire community and have an appreciation for where our students reside. The tour was great, it was helped, it was supported by many different sponsors throughout the entire event, but the tour, we were able to again stop at Peaceful Meadows. Judy Wicks and her team at Peaceful Meadows treated us all to a, an ice cream if you chose. So that was nice because it was kind of a warm day riding around on the bus. So it was nice to be able to stop and do that, but we had many other sponsors. Obviously First Student, our bus company donated the bus and the driver, as Ms. Briggs has done for, for many years now. But the other companies that you see listed here donated in many various ways, as you had seen in my prior submission of our donations. So it's just a testament to our community coming together to support one another and welcome our teachers. I forgot to bring the bag with me, but I'll show you from the back. Lenny's Autobody made a generous financial donation, which helped contribute to buying the custom tote bags, just a nice black tote bag that has Middleborough Public Schools screen printed on it. That was done by Monster Color, which is a company uptown that's been great to work with. But, you know, we tried to make sure that our teachers feel welcomed, but also feel informed of the expectations that we have as a district. And through monthly meetings with our new teachers, our district mentoring meetings, we'll continue to expand upon that throughout this coming year. So I'd like to thank some of the facilitators who participated in the training, as you can see here. Lisa Andre, Louise Bertelli, Jen Castenhana, Andy Deizel and his dirt team. He had many of the members of that team represented at various points of his training. Katie Goodine helped introduce our new hires to Aspen, our student information management system. We had a couple of teachers from the high school, Alicia Lane and Crystal Soares, who came in and led a workshop related to our literacy initiative that we have at the secondary level. Mr. Lynch, of course, for his inspiring words at various points throughout the three days. Carolyn Lyons was a huge help. We did a lot of collaboration to make sure that our special educators and our general educators were aware of the protocols regarding special education. So that is helping to save Carolyn some time because last year she had to pull her sped teachers on three different occasions to do the training, so we were able to do it over the course of those three days, which is going to allow for the follow-up to just be deeper and more meaningful. And Carolyn was supported by her team of coordinators, that pretty much all took a part in, in one of the many breakout sessions that occurred. And that included Jen Castenhana, Laura Mansfield, and Kim Redlon. And I neglected to put in there Jennifer Healy, so my apologies to Jen, she was certainly part of the team as well. We also had Suzie Cubic and Sue Miller from the high school, who led a session on setting up gradebooks in Aspen, because as you know, that's an important thing for our secondary-level teachers to know how to do. And lastly, I'd also like to thank our mentors who came in on the third day of Staff Strong. Many came in earlier than what was expected because they wanted to, to see some of the workshops. But our, our mentors range from our pre, our MEC all the way up through the high school, and these are folks that, they're not doing it for the stipend, they're doing it to be able to pay it forward because someone took time out of their busy schedule to help mentor them to become the highly effective educator that they are today. So I'd certainly like to thank our mentors, and in particular, our two mentor coordinators, Joyce Martin and Sue Miller, who've been in those roles for a few years now. And Mrs. Martin has really been the champion of mentoring in this district for a, a long time. She was leading the mentor program when I was starting as a teacher back in 2002. And both of those women have played a major role in being a mentor for me over the years, so I'm really appreciative of their support and leadership. If there's any questions about the Staff Strong three-day orientation program, I can gladly take those, or if you'd like me to continue on and talk about Ed Camp, Staff Strong, I'd gladly do that as well.
Mr. Chair, would you like to? Why don't we go into the Ed Camp, and then when people have questions?
Absolutely, thank you. On August 31st, our staff across grades 6 through 12 met here in the Nichols Auditorium for an Ed Camp. And if you've never participated in an Ed Camp, they're sometimes referred to as an unconference. It's really professional development that's developed on the spot to meet the needs of the participants at that moment in time. So there are really just four rules with Ed Camps, and one is that you participate. The actual building of the agenda for that day is done that morning. We had, with the schedule you can see here, we had 20 minutes in the beginning to introduce what an Ed Camp was, and then we actually built the schedule for the remaining three sessions right then and there. So it's, Ed Camps are important because it allows people to tailor their professional development to their needs, and which means that people need to participate. Communication is important as well, that people need to think and, and share their thoughts freely. Ambulate, sometimes we call it voting with your feet, that you can just, if you go to a session and it's not meeting your needs, get up and leave, because it's all about you and meeting your own professional growth needs. And celebrate, and that is to just have a great time learning from one another and learning. Sometimes you, you may teach next to someone for 10 years and not know the, the secret little things that they do in the classroom that make magic happen, so the opportunity to be able to celebrate that and learn from one another in a, in a very casual setting. So the rules for that are pretty simple, we generated a schedule, and this is the actual topics that were generated right then and there. We had a, a board of sorts made that we put up on the wall over here, as you can see the, the number 15 sign. We covered that wall in Post-it notes because people were just putting up their ideas of what they wanted to talk about. With collaboration with Mr. Gagan and Mr. Branigan, we were able to synthesize all those ideas and come up with all of these workshops that you see here. The teachers were able to go to what workshop they wanted. If they got there and it wasn't meeting their needs, they could get up and go to another workshop. So it was PD that we've done at the middle school, we've done two Ed Camps at the middle school, but this was the first time that the high school experienced this, and it was the first time that we had done one with such a large group. And we also received some feedback from that. This feedback is received using a program called Teach Point that we use for educator evaluations as well as professional development. Same rating scale from strongly agree to strongly disagree in the color schemes. As you can see with the light blue and the dark blue, the most, mostly strongly agree and agree. The prompts are pretty generic to any professional development because it's just a generic survey. But as you can see from the results, people agreed that this was something important for their professional practice and impacting student performance. The comments, again, I kind of cherry picked to try to represent the general gist of comments because we had 100 and probably 50 participants or more. So I tried to just glean what, you know, the salient or more generalizations of what people had to say. And a lot of it was positive about being able to get together and, and just talk and, and make it a personalized experience for themselves, but also to have time to sit together as six, 12 teams that were interdisciplinary is something that we don't do often enough. But not everyone was totally pleased with the Ed Camp. The, the big rectangle in from the left-hand side, no, excuse me, from the right-hand side. While these Ed Camps are a good idea, I feel that they're used too often. You know, this person, this is someone who wants more structured PD. And you know what, that's great, we do structured professional development as well. But it was an opportunity to, to try something new, to get people out of their comfort zone, which is important for growth. You know, grow and, and learn and do new things if you don't try them. So the majority of the feedback we received from the Ed Camp was positive. And as you can see from one of the comments there, this was a positive experience, and let's hold more Ed Camps. And that was a strong sentiment from many of the comments that were provided. So I think it was a successful endeavor, and I'm thankful to, to those who were open-minded to that experience and wanted to participate, and thankful for Mr. Branigan and Mr. Gagan's leadership in making that event happen. And I'm always just plugging our Twitter handle, @MiddleBrowPS, hashtag engage MPS.
And thank you to your leadership for putting this whole thing together also.
Thank you.
I, I got to tell you, thank you, thank you to everyone who helped out, the mentors really for stepping up. Because it, like you said, it's not about a dollar, it's about, there's a relationship there too that's going to last forever, like you talk about. I, I actually had an opportunity to talk to some teachers that went through this, and one of the funny ones was, it was nice to get back to the junior high. We don't interact as much, but it was good to interact with them. So they were really, the person was really excited that they got to do that, and this was after the fact. One person said me, really apprehensive about going to this Ed Camp thing, you know, really, really, till it got through it. When he got through it, he goes, it was the best thing we went through, it was really, it was like, it grew on its own. And it, and it, even if you had to focus on something, it went off some, it went wherever it needed to go, and he loved it. But he was apprehensive at first, but then, but then really, really loved it. Aside from the Ed Camp, the Wellness Program, every, I, I think I talked to four different people that went and said, the best thing. And no one felt rushed this year. In the past, they kind of felt rushed. They didn't feel as rushed this year, they got to go to their classrooms, they got to do things like that. So these are the feedbacks I was getting from different people that I've run into around town when I'm out and about. So I thought that when you start hearing things like that, and you're seeing anywhere from 85 to 95% of the people saying, this was great, on the Ed Camp, it's a home run, it's a home run, I think it's well-spent time.
I mean, the great thing with Ed Camps is that, is that, you know, you can chart your own course with it, but it's, it's not something I think we could do all the time. But I think it, it does make a nice break from the norm because we do get a lot of sit-and-get or a lot of just time to, to sit and work on curriculum and build assessments. I think time to get together and talk as educators about our practice is something that we don't do often enough in, in larger groups. Be kind of cool to maybe do it pre-K-12 sometime in the future.
I got to say, I think the three-day thing is a great idea. I've worked in quite a few schools, and oftentimes you have a day of really rushed, this is all the information you need to know, and you just throw it in there, especially if you're a new teacher. You don't really get time to network with anybody, you don't get time to learn anything, and you're just in there doing the job. With the three-day thing, it sounds like, I mean, you get to meet people, you get to do the Ed Camp, you really get to put yourself out there and learn people and make connections, and I think it's really good. And the Ed Camps, in my experience, you know, you got, how many teachers have you got at the high school, like, a whole lot? That's a lot of years of experience right there, somebody's going to have some good ideas. And it's more focused than when you get that general person that comes in and says something that's supposed to cover everybody's topics. I think it's really great, I hope it continues on.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
That the superintendent sent all of us the packet of what opening week would look like and everything like that. I did look at it, I did read it, I attended the end of the Ed Camp. But the person who spent the most time looking at it was my wife, who's a fifth-grade teacher in Falmouth, and spent a lot of time bringing that information back and asking if they could do something like that there. Exactly what Adam said, which was, there are, there are a lot of teachers out there who are like, wow, this is interesting. My wife spent two days going through essentially the same material with two different speakers, and it, you know, it wasn't something that she was thrilled with by the end because you heard the same material just from two different sides. And she would have appreciated something like this, so I think, you know, imitation is a serious form of flattery, and I know that's moving forward in other districts, so I want to thank you.
Just, you know, I didn't have, I didn't play a part in the Wellness Fair that Mrs. Piattelli and her team put together, but it should be noted that it was a phenomenal event, not just the dancing that took place, but the, just the general atmosphere that was in the gymnasium at the high school. And even prior to that, in our, in our opening remarks, the Wellness Fair itself, and then followed with professional development from the state. You know, I think people left feeling supported, informed, and I think they felt a sense of community. So I would say that those three big rocks that Mr. Lynch talks about for our strategic objectives, I think they were well-adressed over the course of these three days, and particularly on the first day. So thank you, Mrs. Piattelli, for putting together such a wonderful health and wellness fair. I feel healthy and, and more well now.
I'd also like to thank the ACER representative for their donation of a Chromebook, as well as Dell's lemonade from Kathy for the Wellness Fair that was donated for these pieces, so thank you. Just me, oh, every time.
I made dancing break out in the gym.
Dr. Gates, thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much.
Just like, just have to add my two cents without belaboring the point, but again, you run this program every year. You're so professional in your approach to this particular orientation in these three days and the professional development. Every year, I just love how you present your approach, you launch it, you roll it out, and you gather data and feedback right away. And then you come back and you share that with us, and you don't just go, this is all the great stuff, yay, me! You say, okay, there's all the great stuff on the slide, and what I'm gonna focus in on right now is the area of opportunity for growth for next year. And every year, you focus in on that piece, and you get better, and the program gets better, and everyone around you kind of leans in to help that process. So I can't overstate that enough, how just amazing that is, and how it's just such a professional approach. And then you come here in a very professional way and outline everything that's gone on. So thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
Quite impressive.
Thank you. I just think it's just really important that our district has a strong presence and statement to make for our new teachers, because we want them to understand that we are a district of high expectations. And not just high expectations that we expect you to achieve on your own, but we expect you to be able to reach out to our support network. And I think that's the importance of building that community that we've been building each year and giving time for that to be fostered, because we can't all do it alone. You need to have, not just your mentor, but your own network of support, and you don't learn what that network is if you don't have the times to collaborate. And I think it's just, we use the opportunity to share about our expectations, but also talk about, you know, approaching things from a growth mindset, and, you know, understanding that we always have areas for improvement, and, you know, just setting that stage. We want people to have a long, healthy 30-plus years of employment here that propels our students to excellence. So I think it's just important to make sure we set that stage well. So, thank you all very much.
Moving on, Mr. Chair.
Members of the committee, my next item is the summary of new hires, and I provided you with a list, a collective list. At each meeting, we have a list on the back of the agenda that lists the new hires, but this gives you a sense of the fact that, on this list, I believe there are 39 names, and there's a 40th to come, an ESP at the high school. But these are folks from cafeteria recess monitors who might work 10 or 15 hours a week, all the way up to the, obviously, the athletic director and the hiring that's gone on, and the work that's involved in these confidential interviews, reference checks, making sure we have the right people for the right positions, and we started early this year, tried to start as early as possible. So you see that list, it's 39 strong in front of you, that, like I said, will be 40. Don't need to go through the entire list, but certainly I'm appreciative of all the work that went into finding these, hopefully, the best and the brightest. And then this whole group sat down for three days with Dr. Gates and the faculty, the administration of the school, and teachers in the school to get that orientation, which is so important, and it sort of all fits together, and hopefully, like Dr. Gates said, is all designed for one thing, to improve the lives of our students, student achievement, and the culture of the buildings and the life of the school. So that just gives you an idea on one page, sort of the work that's gone in. I certainly answer any questions you have about new hires, but like I said, they go from being cafeteria recess monitors, and those are very important people too, because those are people who are with your little ones every single day at lunch, and making sure their lunch, their milk is opened, because that can be tough for a kindergartner to do. And helping out with recess, because sometimes when they get out there to recess, it's the first time they've ever been to a recess. That's what kindergarten's all about, is learning how to socialize. So that, those are very important positions, and obviously, like I said, all the way up to the combination piece that we worked on with the budget last year, with the assistant athletic director and athletic trainer position, which has come in handy already. We already had some instances where students have needed some assistance out in the field, and we've had people there. So it's important. So I wanted you to see that, that big picture, and I think that's important to see. We've spoken, my next item here is the opening day for staff. You saw the agenda, I want to give folks perhaps at home sort of the feel of the first day, and it started off with a welcome from me, and sitting down with the faculty and doing an opening day speech, and talking about where we are as a country, where we are as a school system, the district plan for continuous improvement, and just talking about that and thanking them for going through that process last year, all that vetting that went on, and able to see that sort of finished product that you folks endorsed as a school committee, and talking about the action plans that we continue to work on. So that was my sort of hour there. And then at nine, we had some folks that represented different groups, including our employee assistance program, our flexible spending accounts, the Social Security Administration. Kathy will talk about this in a second, she's gonna help out with this. We then went down to the gym and had an employee health and wellness fair, which is consistent with our district plan about the importance of staff wellness and faculty wellness. And Kathy can mention a little bit more in detail about that and the planning that went on there. Then we gave the association time for them to get together and talk about some changes and some contracts that have been signed and some things moving forward, and that's always important time for them to get together as an association. And then we went to the cafeteria, we provided a box lunch, the district provided a box lunch. Rebecca Bagnell and her staff put that together at the high school. They were literally paper box lunches, which had a nice balanced little meal. And they all, cute little names, the sachem sandwich and the different things, and pilgrim, and so it was good. And then we went to the auditorium, the collective group, the entire faculty and staff went back to the auditorium for a presentation from the director of the Safe Schools Program for LGBTQ students, talking about student rights. He came from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, but he's also on the faculty at Harvard, talking about student rights and the fact that whether a student is male, female, transitioning, whatever pronoun they want to use, they have as many rights as every other student in our school district. So I've heard a lot of positive comments on that. In general, as Mr. Givenoni said, the feel and the feedback that we've received from this first day was extremely positive, and I want Kathy to talk a little bit more about sort of the central office's role in sort of putting this together and coming up with one of those little lightbulb ideas, saying, hey, what if? And it turned out to be a great what if. So Kathy, go ahead.
Sure, thank you. As Dr. Gates and Mr. Lynch both said, the seed of this started with the district continuous improvement plan, with the leadership team asking, how can we get resources to staff? How can we let them all know? And of course, the opening day is the only opportunity where we have everyone in the same building. So I know we had, in the central office, always been talking about getting more information to staff about financial things, boring stuff, you know, 403Bs. So we picked up the charge as a committee, which was great, because every day we could talk about it, what about this, what about this? We didn't have to wait till Tuesday at 3 o'clock to meet, it was every day we were talking about it. What about this? And everyone would give their opinion. So everyone helped out in the planning stage, but in particular, I would like to thank Ann Gagnon and Cheryl De Benedictus, because they took extra parts in planning. Also, I'd like to thank Adam Pelletier, Sean Cicliano, Cindy Di Stefano, Ellen Driscoll, Rebecca Bagnell and her food service staff, Megan Enos for her help, and also all of the vendors. They really came through. We had 26 vendors, and they were all very excited. They're as excited as the staff were about the participation in the room. The excitement was really, usually these kinds of fairs are held after school, and very few people show up, a handful of people. So during, when we first met in the auditorium, we had five short presentations. One was from a 403B company, which was our goal, to get that out there. She spoke about supplementing your pension, your state pension and your social security. It's like a three-legged stool, you need all three of them, your personal savings to get through.
Not to interrupt, but that was not a commercial for her.
No.
That was very, very outlined, just black and white, about retirement and about what's available and how people should plan for the future. It was not a commercial for that particular person, so that was important to note.
Yeah, she never does a commercial about her company. She's just interested in getting that product out to everyone. We had the employee assistance program representative come, and she gave an overview to the staff, because everything that they offer is available to everyone who works for us, whether they have health insurance with us or not. Margaret Hannan, who is the representative from Interface, which is the mental health care coordination service that Megan Cork facilitated with the grant from McLean Hospital, and that's a very important program. And again, having all of the staff in the auditorium at one time to hear this message is important, because Megan Cork's presence is more at the elementary level, so it was great to have the secondary level be able to hear about it. We had a representative from social security who talked about the government offset pension, because as, having a public pension, you're offset with your social security earnings, and there is the windfall provision and all of these crazy rules. And then the representative from our flexible spending account talked about, of course, the medical flexible spending, but we also have childcare flexible spending. So they all moved into the gymnasium after their talks, and I think people were intrigued. And there was a lot of activity at those tables, as well as Rite Aid was there, they administered 51 flu shots for staff. We had music, we had dancing, it was videoed. As of today, we have 3,987 hits on YouTube for Flash Mob, which Ann choreographed. We had photos and a photo booth with the big frame that Melanie and Sean created, kind of impromptu. We also had the Acer tablet that was donated by our Acer rep. We had lemonade, and we had the water bottles for everyone. So it was a great feel in the gym. Some of the vendors even had their own raffles at their table, someone had an Amazon gift card. Robin Arabino, who has an art studio, had a seascape that she raffled off. So every, you know, it was all positive feedback from both the staff and the vendors, and then the afternoon session with the DESE presentation was also phenomenal. So I think it was a twist from something that we're used to, and I think it was a good twist, and hopefully the positive feeling will last throughout the year.
Any comments or questions from the committee?
Some of you could have done a better job on the dancing, but I think you did a fantastic job. I'm not gonna point out anybody, but I will mention Paul.
I think he's challenging you to a dance-off right here on camera, I think is what I just heard. Was that it?
Absolutely. And thank you to Kathy Piattelli. She also, she mentioned Ann and Cheryl De Benedictus spending a lot of extra time on this, but Kathy Piattelli certainly did too in organizing this. And that, like I said, that little what if we did this became this day-long program of employee health and wellness. She forgot to mention there was a nutritionist there. There were, there was water and apples and oranges, and it was, it was just, everything I've heard from the day has been positive. So I thank Kathy and the crew for putting that basic thing together. And we wanted to provide them with opportunities to become more aware of what's available to them on a day-to-day basis. The employee assistance program is important, financial counseling, individual counseling, psychological counseling, all those things are available to them at free of charge. Flexible spending account, how important that is to save money on taxes, and even for their children's braces or glasses. And some things that people came up to us, or to me anyways, and I know they came up to Kathy, and said, wow, we didn't know that we could take advantage of something like that. And it's free of charge. So I think that's important, and I think that was a real great outcome of that day. We also had a stuff-a-bus program, and we stuffed a lot of food into a bus. There were pancakes, syrups, and green beans, and all kinds of stuff that went to the St. Vincent de Paul Society here in Middleborough, and that, the dry foods, the dry goods will go back to Middleborough families in the future. So overall, great day, so thank you very much.
One of the pieces that I appreciate is when you talk about how it ties back to our plan, which we talk about that staff wellness, because if the staff can't be well, and wellness doesn't mean, oh, I feel good this morning, I don't have a fever, I don't have a cough. Wellness is about all of it. Your financial wellness, everything that's gonna cause, what I was taught was the stressors of life. If we can help minimize those stressors by telling everyone what these opportunities are, it's our job to help them, because they're gonna help us in the long run and be well in the classroom. So I appreciate that it tied right back to, as a district, how we can improve, that improvement piece.
Mr. Chair, I think the important thing too is that everybody in the buildings, they're so busy running, doing their jobs, everyone's just running, 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 and we have all these resources, and it's so critical that this idea came to life, where we actually pause and say, we need to dedicate time for this experience. So they're taking time, maybe away from their running and their scheduling and their planning, to just say, it's, we need to give you this time in your day, in your schedule, to focus on yourself and your, and your well-being. So I think that was the critical piece here, because it's one thing to have all the resources, but it's another thing to allow folks that time to engage with those opportunities. So that was a gift, and I hope that that continues next year as well.
I just wanted to mention again, I keep forgetting, some people, the YMCA was there, and Rainham Fitness Club, and we had fitness clubs there for physical wellness, so they were there also, so.
You did send out thank you letters to all the vendors for participating.
Super, they'll come back, I'm sure. Moving on to, from my report with opening day for students, or opening days for students, we're now three days in. We have had some issues with regard to the phone telecommunications. Has been a problem over the first couple of days. We had some garbled messages that were coming through. We were able to communicate with, I didn't get any folks calling the central office who were upset, I think that the second call always sort of satisfied things, hopefully. But that problem has been mitigated through Windstream Communications and Verizon. Good friend Michael Fontaine, local Verizon manager, was able to step in and assist us also, and many thanks to Mark Mobley for his work with Ellen Driscoll on solving that situation, and, like I said, mitigating what could have been something that happened over the course of time. And I can recall, having been a building principal and having an oversized 18-wheeler come down South Street in Bridgewater and take out all of the phone lines on the first day of school, I mean, take out the phone lines. This was just a little bit of a garbled voice thing, so I was sort of like, this was nothing. But it was something, and it was an incident that was taken care of, it went to the highest priority list by day two, and was solved by day two. So bus issues, over the first couple of days, it happens, buses are later. You know, the high school gets theirs, the kids on the buses, the kids go, then it goes to the middle school, and we make sure every kid goes to the right place, and we get them to the middle school, and they end up 10 or 15 minutes, so it piggybacks and snowballs a little bit. And by the time they hit the elementary school, that some of these buses are 20 minutes or a half an hour late. Things do even out, things, these routes will shorten, times will get back to normal for next year, but we do have a number of new students, a number of new houses, a number of new bus stops that we had to add this year. So do, things do change from year to year. So we ask and appreciate everyone's patience at home as we work through these sort of issues that come up as a district, when you all of a sudden take a bunch of empty buildings and you fill them with students and faculty, and these things do occur. So overall, a good, positive beginning, lots of energy, lots of good feelings, and lots of smiles. I've been able to visit the schools, have not been to the MECC yet, and will be visiting with them tomorrow and see all those kindergarten students. Sometimes they have enough to worry about without seeing the big guy come down the hall and say, who's that, who's that, who's that, when they're trying to get to know the name of their teacher. So try to give them a little time. So that's opening day for students. Moving on, if there's any questions, I'd answer anything there. Opening day enrollment, I'm happy to report that our enrollment is up from June 1st of last year to September 7th of this year. We are up 14 students total as a district, which is minimal, but it's in the right direction in terms of some predictions that said we would get fewer students. I would say that Middleborough High School is showing probably, well, definitely, the largest enrollment increase going from the end of last year at 675 to the beginning of this year at 713. So a significant number there, and plus, if you, we add in the futures program, that even goes on to another 16 students, so that is 729 at the high school. So we're gonna continue, hopefully, enrollment, continue that train, trend. We have the MSBA who has said that we're gonna have a high school of 720 students in 10 years. And I'd hopefully like to prove them wrong and provide that extra space that's on the plan for the building, and maybe 10 years down the road have to go back to the MSBA and say, we need to put a few more classrooms on that, hopefully on our new high school. So that's our enrollment. We'll get official figures, October 1st is our official really sort of certified date that we have to go, but those are, those are live bodies in terms of attendance for us for the first three days, and we'll obviously get a better handle as we, as we move forward on those, those numbers. So any questions on that at all? Okay. School choice update. Mrs. Piattelli can report that we have just about the same numbers last time. We have one child that may be added to MKG from Taunton, and we're reviewing that file, and that could be addition, but with, that's, we wanna try to report on school choice every meeting, but our numbers are good in that department. We certainly would like to be better in that department, so.
So we have the 12 returning from last year, and we have 18 that have been through the paperwork process, and then one in the wings.
One in the wings. And that concludes my report for this evening. That concludes my report for this evening.
Before we conclude, I do want to point out one thing to the school community members because I think it's important. On that list of new hires the superintendent gave us with the soon-to-be FOI members, I think it's important to note to the committee that not a single one of these people get hired until they meet with the superintendent. You know, he has that sort of final interview before they sign paperwork and become members of the district. And I think that's, that's to provide what the district's about and to provide that, you know, this is what Middleborough is about. And, and so, you know, as I've said before, I've been involved in other districts. That doesn't happen in other districts and I appreciate that and I do want to point that out, Mr. Lynch, that I really appreciate that and I know it takes up a lot of your time to meet with FOI people and to give them time and to.
It's important. Time well spent.
And it's also not, you know, it's good back and forth where people ask you real questions and, and comments and there are people, I will tell you that we've seen who are on the fence, not sure, you know, when they come over if they're going to be, and I think in a lot of cases, Brian has pushed them towards that this is the place to be. You know, they were going to get offered the job and weren't sure, you know, had to have conversations with their family and, and husband and wife, but you know, Brian works hard to sort of push them over the edge and become a Middleborough member, so.
Over the edge.
I was told, Mr. Chair, that, Mr. Chair, I was told that, that is, that impressed someone that they actually met with you because it doesn't, it doesn't happen elsewhere, I guess. I, I wasn't aware that it doesn't happen. I knew it didn't have to happen, but it's, it's, I appreciate that you do take that time and I think other people do too.
Thanks. I just want to say that my final question for each of these people, whether they're in the stadium, a teacher, an athletic director, an athletic trainer, a school year secretary, is I asked them about their job and their job description, but I also asked them, what's the difference between a good secretary and a great secretary? What's the difference between a good teacher and a great teacher? And their ability to articulate that answer, I think, is important. But in all instances, it's that personal connection that any individual makes with an organization and with its constituents is really important, so. And I get different, I've, I've talked about this a little bit before, but I get different reactions from different people. I've had tears. I've had sort of, I'd never get that, can I get back to you on that? But they take, sometimes they take a deep breath and take some time and, and it's important, I think, moving forward, that, that they have that personal connection and, and because everybody can remember really good teachers, but they also might remember that great teacher and what made that difference, so. Thank you.
Just a couple of MSBA updates. The high school, I want to thank the members of the committee for attending the joint meeting with the selectmen last night. Both the building committee, no, the three of us, the building committee, the school committee and the selectmen unanimously endorsed the project moving forward for town meeting and for the town election. The total price of the project will be $106 million roughly. Of that, 46 million.
103.
103, sorry. 103. Was thinking of another number that we were dealing with. 103 and 43 million will be picked up by MSBA and the town will be responsible for $60 million. We've already figured out what the average tax price would increase would be for a resident, should be about $325 on average for an average home in Middleborough.
And that 1.3 for the feasibility had already been voted in and supported, so that number actually goes down just a little bit in terms of the total. Not the total cost, but the, the relevant cost.
And so the building committee will be spending time doing a lot of community forums. The first forum is this, next Saturday, next Saturday is the first one. Next Saturday at the high school at 9:00 AM. There'll be a forum, but there'll also be opportunities for people to go on tours and see some of the problems with the facilities and see them up. Mr. Branigan and a few other people will be taking people on tours for that. So that's really important if people want to be. What?
Mr. Chair, I have that.
Please.
So this Saturday, September 16th, 9:00 AM at the Middleborough High School. The presentation as well as a walkthrough at the Middleborough High School on September 19th at 6:30 PM at the Berkley School Auditorium, 6:30 PM on September 20th, at the Nichols Middle School at 6:30 PM on September 28th, and at the Oak Point Ballroom on September 27th at 7:00 PM. So those are all scheduled, currently scheduled informational sessions so people can get the information, ask questions. I think I've sat through the presentation three times already and it's, I'm not, I'm not bored with it though. It's weird. It's, it's, you look at it and it's, it's amazing what the process has been and, and I think more information is going to be available at, by the end of next, middle of next week on the MHSbuildingproject.com website. So feel free to go over there and take a look at that.
And through you, Mr. Chair, that the. The collective board has also advertised and told folks that if there's any organization out there that would like one or two representatives or more from the committee to come and talk about the project, we're more than happy to do that as long as it fits in with schedules. For example, I know that next Wednesday evening, Rob DeRozier and I will be attending the Rotary and talking to the Rotary Club about the MHS Building Project. So there are a lot of projects, a lot of those small, smaller workshops that will be in place, but those that Mr. Givernoni mentioned are the larger, major open enrollment sort of, anybody that wants to come in, whether, whatever age group they are, whatever age they are, and wants to talk about the high school project, they're welcome to.
And, you know, I want to open it up, as we said before, that just doesn't apply to organizations. If somebody wants to have a coffee hour in their home and ask one of us to come over and talk about it, we're more than willing to do that. This is not sort of a campaign, but it's just about putting the facts out there and letting people see. We will gladly answer any question that anyone has. If we don't know the answer, we'll get it. And that's the biggest thing. And what normally happens is, just so everyone knows, is anything you ask us, we relate to the rest of the building committee and we, we get an answer and we put it up on our website. Sometimes I'll, we'll ask people, is it okay if we use your name as having asked that question? If people don't want that, that's fine. But we put the question up with the answer that came with it because we assume other people have those same questions too, so.
It's important to note also that this vote has not occurred yet.
Right.
The vote has not occurred. So, and there's some sentiment out there that, oh, this is a done deal. It's not a done deal.
Right.
There are a couple of upcoming dates that people need to pay attention to and those are October 2nd and November 4th. And there's more information in the Gazette today. The Middleborough Gazette has a couple of pieces on the high school project. So stay in tune to local media and social media and website and, like we said, well, it's a transparent process.
And, and one other thing too is, just to make it clear as sort of an informational piece for the members of this committee and the community, there hasn't been a packed form that, the Middleborough, yes, to Middleborough High School. That's not related to the building committee or to us in any way, shape or form. They're doing their thing because they, they feel obviously that they want the project to go forward, but I didn't want people to think that that was us. We're happy, I'm happy with what they're doing and they've reached, reached out to us on a couple of occasions to ask questions and pieces like that. So they're out there too, if people were interested. And then the MECC.
Mr. Chair?
The MECC? Yes.
And make comment on the last. So the presentation, I was very impressed with the fact they went from the beginning of the process, like years ago, and they brought through every step of the way, every decision that was made, all the options and how they looked at it. Because I get asked a couple of questions about, why can't we just do this? Like, why can't we just fix the old building? They looked at all that and they have all that information. So if, if, I would encourage people to go with that because they, it's a really well-done presentation and I was very impressed with it.
The MECC, we still have the, the flashpoint that needs to be fixed, but the good news is.
From MDM Engineering. That's the next step.
And the other thing too is I should also mention that in both the feasibility study for the high school and the roof for the MECC, we are both under budget in both pieces.
Yes.
Considerably. So I just want to let people know that. Just a couple of things to go down relatively quickly. Again, reminding people, MAS C, MAS S Fall Conferences, November 1st through 4th. The 4th being the town election. Currently, the superintendent and I are attending. We will be back on the Saturday to make sure we're here for election all day. And on a related matter, when I gave you the update to the school calendar, the calendar included the first Thursday in November. Clearly, I, I request that we change that to make sure that we don't have one that week. It'll, it'll probably fall to the second and third week.
I thought we did that anyway, that night.
Oh, did we?
We, I think, I thought we voted it that night that we would be making that change, if I'm not mistaken.
See, I didn't, I didn't see it that way, so.
Oh, we, because we had discussed it and we had discussed specifically, that's the, the event down in, in the Fall Conference and 99% sure that we had discussed it. It might have made the actual date, but we did discuss it that night.
We'll, we'll make that change.
Absolutely.
Since we're all aware of it and know we're going to do it. Okay. Thank you.
The 9th and the 16th then? The 9th and 16th?
Yep. So thank you. Subcommittees, I sent out the subcommittees to everybody. I did get some feedback on there and then Mr. Lambert caught me. So obviously wish him well, but I'll be getting back to everybody on that particular piece, so I didn't want to take a little time and go back. But again, I can't emphasize enough how much we appreciate the hard work that Mr. Lambert did and stepped up again, time and time again. So Anne, we thank you.
Thank you.
And we're sorry you're leaving, but look forward to the new chapter and you're always in your family's life. The next up is the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would move that we approve the consent agenda as presented this evening.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I only had one question and probably the best person to answer this is Lisa Andre and I didn't have a chance to reach out to her prior and she's not here to have a voice in this, but my question was about the fun run. Right, I gotta go in here and find it. Consent agenda. MKG fundraisers. Well, I think it was one of the last ones, if you give me a second. There it is. So the fun run on October 4th, so that's taking place during the school day and I know that it did last year as well. So I just wanted to better understand kind of that piece because we're taking all our students out of kind of some time on learning and I just wanted to hear from maybe some folks about that and why that's what we need to do. I know it's a ton of money they raised last year, it's a ton of money they're looking at this year, but I just, we typically don't do fundraisers like that, I think, for, I don't know. I know we've done them for, you know, spirit sticks during the day, but it's kind of during personal hours and a student has a chance to engage with that, so, oh, yay, perfect, great. Please come talk to me about this.
Hi, I'm Brienne Kasimian. I'm a member of the Mary Kay Good PTA and I hate being on camera, so ignore the shaky voice on the finance committee. I can sort of face this way, so I face it on camera. The fun run is going to take place the same way it did last year. It's during the specialist classes, so in lieu of like a gym class, it's a, it's an outdoor activity for the kids where they participate in that, so it doesn't affect any time on learning. They do it during the specialist, so an entire grade, they get to come out and, and participate as a grade and they get to have a great physical education component and a community building component at the same time.
And I appreciate that. The other thing I was just thinking, I know like the spirit sticks and stuff, they're not mandatory because kids, you get the notices and they can kind of stop and engage if they want. It sounds like this is, the entire class goes out, it's community building, but just to be clear for the community, it's not mandatory that someone participate and raise funds. You don't have to feel like pressured that even though it's taking place during the school hour and everyone's joining.
Absolutely not. Everybody gets to participate whether or not they raise a cent.
Great.
Everybody gets, every student and staff member gets a T-shirt. All the kids will get, even though there'll be incentive-based prizes, there'll be prizes just for participation, just for being at the school and it's really a fun event. It's a really great community building event for the kids to get to spend time with their, their whole grade. The fundraising's certainly a nice aspect of it, especially where so many districts in the area do this same program, so that, you know, obviously is, is a huge reason why, but the community building event and getting to include the kids, no matter whether they fundraise or not, is, is, it's an important component of it.
That's great. I think that was important information for the community to understand. I know it was wildly successful and the PTA did some great things with that funding as far as giving back to the building and some technology and things like that, so. Whereas a little bit different because it's during the school day, I thought that was important, we have some clarity for the community and for ourselves. Thank you for coming down here and speaking to those points. Appreciate it.
And we missed you last night. At the other meeting.
Yes, I had the, the Nichols PTA meeting was at 7:00, so I went to the school building committee meeting and then left before the selectman meeting, so.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions about the MKG packet while, while I'm, while I'm down here and my voice isn't quite, rrrr anymore?
Awesome.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Any other questions? Again, consent agenda has the, any member has the ability to take it out if they so wish. Does any member wish to take anything out of this agenda? The consent piece, seeing no one, I'm just going to move on. I have a, a motion to accept it as written. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, thank you. We took care of the school committee calendar, so we're all in awareness. I just want the committee to, and the community to know that we'll be meeting next Wednesday, the 13th. That won't be televised, it's a workshop meeting for the school committee. We generally don't televise workshop meetings. We're working on sort of rules of order and there'll be a couple of pieces to look at our actual meeting, the setup of our meeting. And the next regular school committee meeting will be Thursday, September 21st, 2017. I did not receive any correspondence or anything like that, so unless somebody else has any, Chair wants to take a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?